That's pretty good.
That's good news tonight. Anyway, Thomas, how you doing? How's the Moore's still there?
Yeah, we don't want you sucking up all our internet here.
You haven't lost it to Hatcher yet?
So far, not yet.
All right.
It's been there since about nineteen hundred, so.
Oh, wow.
You've got my buddy Chuck, and he'll be there, and you've got the baby up at the front of the street.
It's funny, it's like the last couple of days. So flat out, people are like, oh, did you see this on Facebook?
Just as long as the damn bridge doesn't fall down your heads.
That's what I check about every day.
Oh, yeah.
I'm worried if I were nervous, I'd be real nervous being there. I don't know what's wrong with C O T.
Yeah.
I tend to go around.
I don't think anybody else is coming either.
I think.
I'm ready to get in and talk to the panelists.
What kind of engineer are you, Peter?
I think it's Sharon.
I'm sorry, you're not even talking about what they're gonna do. You have a stop sign here for Chuck, it bothers him. Because, you know, it's one of those some acts that they have lots of them. They're gonna come all the time.
Okay. Call the Tuesday, December sixth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Um, Joe, could you please call the roll?
Sure, Rich Roberts.
Here.
Ryan Allard. Joe Hammer here, Jim Hughes. George Oikle.
Here.
Tom Dean.
Here.
Tony Homicki. Dave Edwards. Michael Viera. David Drake.
Here.
Peter Lambrouney.
Here.
Paul Thompson.
All right, thank you. Uh, so what's that? Four regular members and two alternates, so I'll seat Dave Drake and Pete Lambrouney for this meeting. Um, first item is a continuation of a public hearing, item three point one. Uh, twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-two Z. Nishant Patel, uh, member owner of Shreemate LLC, D B A. Menusos Liquors seeking a zoning text amendment to section five, eight, B, one. Under provisions of section ten, one, F of the Weathersfield zoning regulations. Adding a minimum distance requirement for package store locations. So, come on up. Uh, just please give us your name and address again for the record and.
Yes. Oh, hi, I'm, uh, Nish Patel. Address one ninety, Spinozrich, Rocky Hill, Connecticut. Uh, I'm here to, uh, I wasn't sure if you guys got the copies of, uh, stuff that I emailed Denise this afternoon.
Only just a little while ago.
Yeah, no, I know, I, that's. Oh, you did get them? Oh, but they haven't got the chance to review it, I see.
No, I'm passing two of them down here for you.
All right, and I'm sorry, I'm not like very good at computers, I did all the work myself. And, uh, I'll try to explain everything as much as I can and.
Okay.
So, you know, I was asked to measure the distances between the package stores that are currently there. And, um, you know, I could, it, it shows on the, uh, copy that I've submitted here, that there, there's a conflict only between the Woolcut Hill, Woolcut Hill Liquors to Steve's Price Cutters, that's in the plaza where I think, I believe Price Right is. That distance is thirteen hundred and forty-eight feet. So, that would be something, you know, had, have to be grandfathered if we agree to write this amendment. Um, I've also submitted something from the state, uh, which says, right, how they want, uh, they also are in favor of denying a liquor permit. Uh, that can affect, uh, the location of anything that's related to like religion that they mentioned church in here, but I'm assuming it. So, and also schools. Uh, they also particularly mentioned in, on page two, which I highlighted, that, uh, you know, which I, to, you know, if you read it, sort of like explains like how they don't want liquor stores to be next to each other. Um, another thing was, I, I, I think, I guess I failed to explain this to the commission last time was, again, you know, we have concentration, right? Now, concentration could be, you might say, so if somebody applies for a liquor store permit and if it's next to me, I might say that's a concentration, and yes, of course, I might say that's a concentration because it directly affects my business. So I might say, well, this is concentration. Somebody on the commission might say it's not a concentration because you know what? The property has been abandoned for the longest time and I think it's in the favor of town. If this property goes, uh, into business, you know, it helps the town hall. So, that's why I'm proposing, you know, hopefully we can come up with something where it explains when you apply for a liquor permit, what's not a concentration? What's an appropriate location to apply for this permit that's left? And another thing I wanted to mention was, uh, the liquor permit that's from the state, which is one permit per twenty-five hundred people, there is, I wanna say there is, I, and I should have drawn that, I should have brought that data, which I didn't, but I think there is about fifty percent of the town in Connecticut are not using every single permit that's available to the town hall because of the state regulations, which is one permit for twenty-five hundred. So for us to sit here and say, oh, we want the town to use all ten permits, I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't, we definitely should. But that shouldn't stop us from putting a regulation that's gonna help to define the, is, is gonna help to strengthen the current regulation because the current regulation, to me, it's weak. It says concentration. So, does that, and, and the current, current regulation, that was another question I had. Like, does that mean, like, if I'm in a plaza, or, you know, for instance, at three ninety-eight Celestine Highway, we have a back room which we don't use, does that mean I could apply for a liquor permit on there? Because it doesn't really say how this works. So, and, uh, the last thing I want to mention before you guys ask me questions on any of this stuff is, are the nine permits, the five permits are on Celestine Highway? And then the five fifteen and the Spiros, which is on, uh, Woolcut Hill, I think, Woolcut Hill Road, which is not that far from Celestine. Uh, I think I measured the distance here between the Celestine Highway and where Spiros is, and I'll tell you the exact distance for, between the two. Uh, it's twenty-six hundred feet. And, and the Steve's is thirteen hundred feet from Celestine Highway. So I remember somebody raising the question that we shouldn't put this regulation in because if somebody wants to put a package store on Celestine Highway, which we currently have five out of ten, and two are in the twenty-five hundred feet proximity of Celestine Highway. And the two are on the other side, which is on Burlington Pike, I mean, I, I, I don't see there's an issue because if somebody wants to go on Burlington Pike Shore, but there's two, I don't see why third would be a problem on that side because there's plenty of distance between the two. So, I, I'll rest my arguments there, and whatever questions you may have, I would be happy to answer.
George.
Yeah. What's wrong with things as they are in Weathersfield? We've been doing this for sixty or seventy years. I think it's working, I don't hear any complaints.
Well, the two.
I don't hear any, I don't see anything in the news about liquor stores being like a ghetto or congregation of them. Uh, and we need more distance. Uh, I think based upon the minutes that we received from the past, when I happen to be a commissioner, as I've been on thirty-eight years, so this is some of my legacy. I don't see a problem with any of it. And why do we need an arbitrary distance? Because sometimes distance isn't the big factor. The big factor is what is it near? Schools, churches, those kind of things? And, uh, are there too many close together? I, I don't really think that's the case in Weathersfield. And so, why are we putting an arbitrary thousand or you're recommending that? I, I don't see the advantage to it at this late date and, and the growth and development of our community. Uh, we've dealt with it, and I think we've dealt with it pretty well over the, as I said, sixty or seventy years, I've been a part, good part of that, half of that time. And, uh, I'm not trying to defend myself or my parts in the past because actually I look back at minutes to the gut, and I wasn't even involved in one of the decisions that I looked at in one of those minutes. But, because I was absent that time, but, uh, seriously, I, I, I don't see any problems. And I don't, what, what bothers me is what happens when you're asking for fifteen hundred distance? And, you know, um, what happens when somebody wants to come in with fourteen hundred and seventy-five feet from the nearest one? I mean, I, I don't see the reason for distance as being a factor in decision making because I think this commission has dealt with the issues of how close they are, how many there are. If the, if you're there and another one comes in near you, uh, for example, on the Silas Dean, we're probably gonna, I'm not gonna say we're gonna reject something like that because I can't say that ahead of time because we'll look at the whole thing. But if it's too close to you and so forth compared to others where it might go, we, we'll make a decision to probably not, uh, not want it. Uh, and that's what we've done in the past when, when the things get too close to each other. And I think it's worked out quite well. So, why, why do you wanna put an arbitrary amount of distance when maybe, maybe at times there's a package store across the street from another one and they want, they, or nearby anyway and across the street? And that's happened further down the Silas Dean at one point, I remember.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, these, these are issues and, you know, and may, hey, maybe citizens of the community think one liquor store is charging too much, and they'd like to see another liquor store in there, and they may come in here and say that to us. Maybe you wanna put another one in to give them some competition. I don't know, there are a thousand and one reasons why.
No, I, I.
Distance isn't the reason, and that's the whole point I'm making. Why are you arbitrarily wanting to establish a distance at this point in time in the growth of this town when a lot of it's developed already?
Yeah, I mean.
Peter?
Uh, adding to George, uh, we received a nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-two, March, uh, third, I guess it was March third, minutes, uh, for a decision that was made regarding this very point that you're arguing. Back in nineteen ninety-two, there were regulations that were very restrictive. We had fifteen hundred feet, as you're suggesting, from location to location. There was also, I won't read all of this, but there was also, uh, so far from schools, uh, so far from, uh, I guess, areas that would be considered some sort of shopping center and, you know. What this meeting was about was that the, yeah, at that time, it was a different, um, planner. He said that in his review of these regulations, and if you, you looked at what the distance is from, from place to place, but you just can't look at that, what we wanted to know is what effect does it have, uh, townwide? And he did that in nineteen ninety-two, and this was Tunderman, and he says in his opinion, the existing regulations pertaining to locations for the sale and service, blah, 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 are, are rigid and inflexible. That, that was his contention back in nineteen ninety-two. And, uh, he said that he had done an analysis and he, he colored things in orange and in red. And he said essentially, these regulations have pretty much locked out any further, uh, possibility for, uh, liquor stores in, in, you know, the permanent areas where we'd want liquor stores. So, his conclusion was, it doesn't really make sense, uh, to have all these regulations. You guys, uh, should be more flexible and you guys should be able to look at the conditions as they exist and as a commission decide what's proper and not proper. This is George's point.
Yeah, no, I get it.
So, so, so this commission in nineteen ninety-two basically removed everything that you're suggesting to put back in.
I mean, see, I didn't know, I don't know where they were coming from, but currently the way it is, right? It, so, it's up to the commission to decide, and I trust the commission, but it's up to the commission to decide whether somebody's gonna. So the last application got denied at the address which was near City Fish Market. Now, let's say that same application comes to, next to me and gets approved. Well, I'm gonna be like, well, how is that not a concentration? If that, the previous application was concentration and the previous applicant was said the traffic was an issue and the parking lot was not paved, now if somebody's coming next to me, how am I not gonna come back here and say, wait, if that was concentration, what is this? So, it was okay to not put one there, but it's okay to put one next to me?
Well, it's not okay, this commission will decide.
And I, again, I'm saying.
You're presuming that this commission would give it blanc, uh, you know, carte blanche. That's not what we're saying. This commission would listen to you and to your claim.
Yeah.
It may be a valid and legitimate claim, and we would use it in our deliberation. With or without any regulations, that would be our responsibility.
Yeah.
So, this, this is where this has ended up in ninety-two. Basically, these regulations were considered too restrictive and essentially locked out any further activity in this, in this business sector. And I, and if, if this was the case in ninety-two, it's gotta be a heck of a lot worse now if you do the, the same analysis that this guy did.
If I was here in nineteen ninety-two, I would argue otherwise by explaining where are the locations that this could have went. It was present, the way it was probably presented in nineteen ninety-two was short, or this, this is rigid because there was not such an economic development was, that was going on, on old Weathersfield and on Burlington Pike. There's plenty of vacant buildings on Burlington Pike, there's plenty of stuff that you could do in old Weathersfield to put another package store. So I would, I would say, yes, in nineteen ninety-two, it might have been rigid because of the availability of the commercial lots that were available to put up a package store, and that fifteen hundred feet probably made it hard back then. But in the current circumstances, I, and that's why I measured the distances, and I'm showing you there is plenty of room to put that tenth permit wherever it needs to, where, if somebody wants to put a, a package store in Weathersfield with fifteen hundred feet, there's plenty of space to put one there. And the second point, where, again, where we are persistent about saying, oh, liquor store is very acceptable business, well, I would argue, my family would say something else, my family doesn't drink, so they would say liquor store is not an acceptable, uh, business. Because we're saying no to dispensing, I see, I see this cannabis business, everybody's been arguing about like, oh, we don't want it in our town, we don't want it in our town, twenty years down the road, maybe every town is gonna say they want it in the town, but that doesn't, just because one person thinks it's okay to have more liquor stores, and that's why we shouldn't restrict, uh, the regulation. Because, so, I'm not trying to stop the competition, what I'm trying to do here is, I'm trying to make sure the, the regulation is in such way where I know, uh, what, I could foresee the future, right? Instead of like me thinking the zoning is this, gonna decide the future of my business. That's another thing, that's, because I would have to literally rely here on the zoning commission to make that decision whether the next package store is gonna be next to me or not. So that's where I'm coming from. And, and it, this is standard, right? I mean, I give you example of Rocky Hill, Cromwell, Middletown, uh, Newington, where every single town has some sort of distance requirement for the package store, just what everybody's doing with cannabis. Even though, you know, to George's point, George is like, package store is, it's easy, right? Where every, everybody accepts the package stores in the community now. I, I would say, I would love to accept cannabis in communities now, but not everybody is thinking the same way.
Richard, you, it looks like you were here and I'm reading, I'm just reading.
Yeah. Well, that's why I remembered that we had the conversation, but.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, what, what do you recall? What, what was the sentiment and why did it make sense in ninety-two?
Well.
And does it still make sense, I guess?
Yeah, Tom wanted to speak and Joe wanted to speak, I'll, I'll defer to them.
Mr. Patel, I think your last, uh, you know, several sets of remarks, uh, have put the, have hit the crux of your, your, your application, your argument for your application, which it is designed to protect your business. And, uh, such, uh, uh, ordinances as this or regulations such as, as that that you propose have an historic effect of reducing competition. It is an attempt to help certain businesses at the expense of certain other potential businesses. I don't think that's what this commission is in the business of doing. And the, you know, I, I'm, I'm in pretty much a full agreement with, uh, George's, uh, comments. Our regulations provide flexibility based upon criteria that the commission makes, can make a decision on. It's not an arbitrary standard that is just cobbled out of the netherworld someplace. But there are standards that require discretion and judgment, and so long as that discretion and judgment is not arbitrary nor abused, the commission can act upon it, and if there are, uh, dissensions from that opinion, there's always the resort to, you know, appealing to the legal process. Your statements about, uh, the, the vagueness of, of the current regulations, I, I disagree with. They are, uh, they're, they're broad, but they certainly do have, uh, justiciable, uh, uh, standards upon which the commission can make a viable and lawful ruling. And, and, you know, if there is facts to the contrary, that can be determined, you know, in, you know, on, on appeal. But, you know, the, the kinds of, uh, vagueness, vagueness of the language that you are citing, that's largely been resolved through case law. Because these are not the kind, this is not the, not the sole place where these kinds of arguments have been raised before. And, um, I'm, I'm to the point where I, I tend to agree with George based upon the ancient standard of, you know, if it ain't broken, don't fix it.
Joe?
Thanks, Rich, so I think I'm kind of on the same lines of, of thought as the other people who've spoken. But I guess one, one thing that to me is really important is the part that says undue concentration in our current regulations, that's a consideration in addition to the normal special permit factors, this is a special permit use, and special permit criteria include comprehensive examination of any potential impacts, whether it's traffic, noise, so on and so forth. And I think, um, you know, so that's gonna be based on a case by case in terms of what is the specific location. And it could be that we feel that from a traffic perspective, something that's a thousand feet away or on the other side of the street from something else, it may be okay on one side and not on the other, or eight hundred feet this way and not that way. I think the, the fifteen hundred straight line test, you know, to me, that would make more sense if we were sort of either a rural or undeveloped town where we haven't been mapped out yet. But I think at this point in our development, with reuse of, of properties on the Silas Dean Highway and the Berlin Turnpike, I think the fifteen would be limiting us, just to give you an example, maybe we decide, you've got a shopping center on either side of the Silas Dean Highway, or within a thousand feet of each other on the same side, and that it actually makes sense to have a package store less than fifteen hundred because if it's in a shopping center, a lot of the customers are gonna be there already to visit other stores. It's not gonna be unique trips just to get to the package store, um, you know, et cetera, et cetera. They're, they're, especially with reuse of, of properties, we might think it's much more appropriate to be less than fifteen hundred than to be sixteen fifty in a particular case. So I, I'm comfortable that we've got the special permit review and we've got the undue concentration aspect in addition under the current reg. And I think the, the, the application that you spoke on and against, I recall a few months ago, was denied. And to me, that's an example of us applying all the different criteria that we have in the existing regs, and that's where we, uh, came out. But again, quarter of a mile up the road, down the road, we have to look at it, and that's not before us tonight. But I'm, I'm comfortable with what we have, and I think it would actually be narrowing and limiting to, to have a black and white straight limit that, that I don't think would be a good idea.
One of the things that I had asked for during the last hearing was not necessarily what, what you provided, which is how far apart are the locations currently? That was, that was something that someone else had asked for. And I think, you know, frankly, we had acknowledged that even if your locations were less than fifteen hundred feet, you know, if we were to amend the regulations, they'd be grandfathered, you know, so, so it wouldn't put anybody out of business, um, you know, to, to impose this regulation. But what I had asked for was something showing fifteen hundred feet from every existing location so that we could understand the impact of the proposed text amendment on what other locations in town would be available?
Yeah.
What other locations within, you know, viable commercial districts would be available for, you know, if another place was going to be opening up? Um, and I don't see that, I, I'm guessing you don't have that, or?
No, I, so, I must have missed that, to note down that, and I don't have that. But I could, like, old Weathersfield would be one place where that is completely away from everything else.
Yeah, I mean, and, and frankly.
And then.
It's not like I make a habit of studying package store locations.
Right, no, I understand that.
But I mean, the one, one by the old town was the only one that I remember ever being down there.
Right.
That's not here now, and, you know, there're probably like two or three other places anywhere in town where there had been package stores that aren't there now, like by Marshalls and, um, you know, one other place. And, and I guess, um, you know, acknowledging that old Weathersfield would be probably outside the fifteen hundred foot radius.
Absolutely, I mean, it is outside that radius, and then there is some room on Burlington Pike, as you see, because the distance between the two is almost fifty-five hundred feet. And, so, you know, I, I'm gathering, like, obviously, I'm not being able to convince the commission here for what I'm looking for. Um, but I just wanna repeat myself here one more last time, is, what, what this does is still leaves in the hands of the commission, which I trust, which has made the right decisions in the past. But considering fifteen hundred feet, it solves a lot of other issues for, like, for future. Because if a applicant that was rejected and some new application, that's gonna be approved for whatever reason, you know, it creates a question, right? Uh, well, I was rejected on the basis of traffic study and the concentration of the package store. Somebody could argue, how is this application approved? Even though it's like, uh, Joe mentioned, uh, thousand feet down the street, how much different the traffic really could be? Because we never did the traffic study the last time, I mean, we just all assumed it's a busy traffic junction.
Can I just, I, I think, um, what was I gonna say? The, uh, you know, I think the differences in traffic that you could see is one business could have a driveway that's in a bad spot because they're stacking at a traffic light that's right in front of it, or has an awkward left turn or entry turn or something like that. And literally, if you go three hundred feet down the road, you may not have that situation anymore. So I think it, it, it can vary. And I guess one question for you, I'm not, I don't think I'm seeing on the drawing that you gave us a red dot for where the package store was next to, um, Marshalls in that shopping.
Yeah, they're close, so I didn't do it, no.
So que- question for you, though, I'm assuming. I'm assuming that that, is that one within a thousand, within fifteen hundred feet of the one across the street at the Weathersfield Shopping Center, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And is it also?
Because just the, the distance between Town Line and, sorry, yeah, so Town Line and Weathersfield Liquors is fifteen hundred seventy-seven feet. So that would be like, more like seven hundred feet.
Would it, would it also be within fifteen hundred feet of Town Line?
Yes. They would, that would be all within seven hundred.
Of, but of two different stores, it would be within fifteen hundred?
Yes, yes, because Weathersfield literally would be two hundred feet from each other, because that would be like across the street from each other.
Right, right. But, yeah, I, I would just say you, you, you could, you know, you could make a point, I think, that, that location next to Marshalls, in a shopping center that has a lot of traffic for Marshalls and other stores already, you know, not a single destination store. It's got not only an entrance on the Silvestine Highway, it has a second entrance on Mill Street. You could make an argument that that's a safer, more appropriate condition than to have something that's only got, you know, one way in and out, out of the Silvestine Highway, you know, in, in a bad location for traffic queuing or, or whatever. So, you know, I think what, what this is basically telling us is under this proposed regulation, we wouldn't be able to put one there.
Like the one we turned down at So Fish?
Correct, as contrasted to this one, which I think is much different than the one we turned down, the one.
They made a case.
Right, right.
They were, they were right.
To be honest with you, I know this, I know this liquor store is different, but we shouldn't be turning things down because of competition, though. Again, I understand.
No, no, I'm not, so I'm not saying.
I'm with you, but if you do this, we should put maybe fifty hundred square foot between paint stores and gas stations and.
Yeah, but the, this was a controlled substance.
It's different.
This was definitely controlled substance. It's like what everybody's been doing with cannabis, right? I mean, ideally, people would just argue possibly, like, why so much zoning regulations on putting a dispensary? I mean, and that was the case with alcohol. So that's why a lot of the towns been, you know, put in some zoning regulations where they're not having bunch of liquor stores and that's all in town. Because just because the state is saying, oh, you, you get to have one permit per twenty, five hundred people, just like what state is saying right now, you could have two dispensaries per town.
I'm with you, but the idea is that if you limit a thousand feet, the guy won't get drunk before he hits fifty hundred square.
No, no, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. This is just to have a community where, you know, you're not just having a bunch of liquor stores and that's all.
Again, you're saying, you know, we don't want, I don't want fifty paint stores on Silvestine Highway.
You know, my son goes to school, I, I wouldn't want a liquor store next to this.
I wouldn't want one either.
Yes, exactly. That's all I'm going to say.
But I wouldn't want a paint store there either, same point.
Yeah, so it's not so much about just competition, but it's also to make the regulations where it's defined where things can go and where things can't go.
I guess to, to answer Peter's question from a while ago, I mean, like George, I was here for this conversation thirty long years ago. And, you know, it, it made sense to me then, you know, particularly when the law partner of your lawyer came and spoke in favor of it, you know, as, as an improvement over what had been in place before with the separation distances and all that sort of stuff. Because, you know, what it, what it basically forced people to do was to go get variances. And, you know, the ZBA would give variances and, you know, the, the way he described it was, you know, if you were popular, if you, you know, knew the right people and so forth, you know, nobody would challenge your variance, but if you didn't know the right people, your variance would get challenged and you'd lose.
Yeah.
And that, that's just not a great way to, to manage things. You know, so, so I, I, I thought it made sense thirty years ago and, and, you know, frankly, I think it's, you know, it's worked well for us since then. You know, I, I think the recent experience that we had where there was, you know, an application to put one in, you know, in a location that had problems, you know, leaving aside concentration because that, you know, that, to me, would be secondary to, you know, traffic and safety and queuing and entrances onto the highway and that sort of thing. I, I think, you know, we've, we've managed to handle those kinds of issues responsibly.
Yes.
And, and, you know, can, will continue to do so. You know, likewise, I, I don't think we have any interest in creating the undue concentration. I mean, it's something that we.
Well, thank you.
You know, every time anybody comes in with any kind of liquor permit for a restaurant, I mean, we talked about it repeatedly when all the people were coming in in Old Weathersfield, you know, with restaurants and, and different kinds of liquor permits. I mean, we, we spend a lot of time thinking and talking about, you know, at, at what point is, you know, is this going to be too much? And, you know, fortunately, I don't think we've gotten to that point, but I frankly think we might be getting close. You know, in terms of having seven restaurant liquor permits within one block of each other on Main Street, you know, might, might be, you know, the, the point at which you say, like, you know, can't we do something different here? But we haven't gotten to that point yet. But I, I think, you know, all of us up here do respect, you know, your operation, your right to continue to operate and so forth. And, you know, balancing that with, you know, creating the undue concentration plus, you know, what is a safe location given the, given the various criteria? You know, at, at this point, we're talking about one place somewhere in town that, you know, remains to be seen. You know, so, so we'll kind of take that as it comes. One other thing that, that, you know, that, that I do know from work is that, you know, you've mentioned Newington's regulations has a separation distance. It does. But it also has a provision at the end of their section that essentially says that the commission can use the same criteria we have in our regulation even if the fifteen hundred feet is, you know, is not met. So it, frankly, it's a better scenario, I think, than, you know, going to the ZBA and hoping that you get the four right people there on a given night to get a variance and you hope that your neighbors don't see it in the paper in fifteen days and file a lawsuit. I mean, that, that's, that's not a good way to run a business and, and you wouldn't want to invest in a business if, if that was the sort of, you know, regulatory regime that you were under. So, you know, that's kind of a, a long-winded way of saying that, you know, I'm perfectly happy to revisit the issue, but I think it's been working well and, you know, to kind of counterpoint Tom's, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. As I said last time, I think this is a solution in search of a problem that we, we don't have yet. And, you know, if at some point, you know, it looks like we do, I mean, frankly, the development of the town is about the same as it was thirty years ago, despite everybody's best efforts. So I don't, I don't honestly see what, what facts have changed. And I'm also a little uncomfortable even moving forward with it without knowing what the, the actual impact of a fifteen hundred foot radius on all of these things would be, because, you know, it, it may end up putting the remaining location in a place we don't want it. But that's my thought.
Richard, can I just follow up on the variance issue? It was noted in these minutes here that in ninety-two, there were twenty-four variances that went to the Board of Appeals, I think, within, yeah, ten years prior. And of the twenty-four, all but two were accepted. So essentially, everybody was going to ZBA and asking for a variance to get what they wanted, regardless of what, what was said. And they were very restrictive, much more restrictive even than you're suggesting back in ninety-two. And, and even so, there was basically an escape clause for someone to go to ZBA and, and get it done anyways. So if we were, just as a matter of question here, if we were to put back a fifteen hundred foot, would ZBA then be able to override that again like they did in ninety-two?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, and, yeah. That, that would be the only thing, because we have, you know, we have a finite regulation. We don't have discretion.
Right.
And if, if the regulation doesn't work for them, they go to ZBA and get a variance.
So, just so I understand clearly, what we did is remove all these constraints, allowing much more discretion and flexibility of this commission in a special permit environment to decide what's right or wrong. And ZBA is essentially out of the picture, right?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
George?
Yeah, different tech. I want to congratulate this applicant. I, I don't use his store because I'm near, near one of your competitors elsewhere in town.
That's okay.
However, when I first moved into town fifty years ago.
Yeah.
And that's a long time.
Is that during prohibition?
Yeah, about, maybe about seventy, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, too long. You know, I, I lived in the Follibrock Apartments and you were very close. And you still have, and I went down here today to take a second look to make sure you were still the same, you have one of the best wine selections I think I can think of outside of some of the package stores, the official ones up in New Hampshire where they have big things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But you do, you still have that, and that's, that's, that's a positive thing.
Well.
And I, I just want to congratulate you as a, you know, not as an applicant, but as an owner.
Well, thank you. I, I mean, I, I see where the decision is going to go towards, but I, I want to thank you for that. And, you know, the selection is also because of what the regulations the state has right now. Because the state, by not allowing wine to, in the supermarkets and things like that, allows the small wineries to come in business in Connecticut. And that allows the small package stores to deal with like a huge wide variety of distributors. Instead of, you know, the ones like wine lends into the supermarket, there's only going to be four different brands of lumber you get, or two different brands of paint you get. That's what ends up happening once it goes into the box stores. And that's why in Connecticut, yes, there is a huge variety of wine, whiskey, vodka, or anything you can think of, yes.
And you keep it.
Yeah.
You have it.
As long as I stay in business, though. As long as you don't put another package store right next to me. All right, well, thank you guys so much.
I wouldn't lie awake nights worrying about that.
Oh, yeah. Thank you guys so much for your time, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to comment on this application? Anyone else? If not, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
All right, motion by Joe, second by George, to close the hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, someone want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion and I, I think it's more appropriate to make it an affirmative motion to approve. It's easier to figure out what the result is that way. So I will, for, for sake of discussion, I will move to approve the proposed amendment to the zoning regulations.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Joe, second by Tom. Discussion.
I, I guess I will just note that I will be voting against the motion that I just made for the reasons that we've all discussed earlier during the public hearing.
Thank you, Joe, for bringing the motion to us.
Okay.
I, I'd like to just say that last time this was presented, I was actually kind of keen on the idea of having some sort of distance. You know, I hadn't realized of this history that you brought up. So I thought that, you know, maybe sharpening the language, getting rid of the vagueness as the attorney suggested, might be good things. And the only concern I had was, you know, would it limit us in, in putting a tenth? And, you know, how does it look like if you, if you lay it out against all the existing, your point, Richard, that you brought up? So, aside from the fact that we don't have that data, I've changed my mind on this after reading what happened in ninety-two. I do agree that in the thirty years since ninety-two, not much has changed, because I've been in this town much longer than that. And if in ninety-two, Tunderman was, was an excellent planner, and if in Tunderman's opinion in ninety-two, this was too restrictive and, and wouldn't have served us well as a commission. And the fact that, you know, the ZBA became the escape clause for everybody that wanted to put in a package store really points out that we, we don't want to go back to the future here. Literally, I, I think it's okay what we're doing and we should stick with it. So I've changed my mind and I will, I will vote against that as well.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, if not, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Nobody? All opposed?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Any abstentions? All right, motion fails.
I guess I, I just wanted to say to the applicant, you know, we appreciate your time and your effort on this, even though we may not have, the outcome obviously wasn't what you were hoping for. I think it was a helpful thing to really focus us on a section of our regulations that we have to deal with all the time and, you know, alternatives to it. So it was a, you know, I think it was a productive discussion.
Yeah, I mean, and, and this is a, kind of a unique industry and business that I, I think we need to kind of keep track of and, and make sure that we don't, you know, overlook or abuse or anything like that. You know, just because of kind of the, the strange state regulatory regime and so forth. But I, I think, you know, the, the current owners are all responsible and we've been.
You're saying the state doesn't know what it's doing in the liquor business?
No, I, I think the, you know, the state has kind of weird priorities when it comes to regulating the liquor business.
That's a lot. I work for them. They have a lot of weird priorities, too.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item, discussion regarding cannabis establishments. There it is.
After our discussion at the previous meeting regarding potential inclusion of separation distances, I had taken a template from a few different communities that seem to have, a few of the communities do have a standard that seemed to be a good template to use. This is compiled from three different municipalities and just to begin the discussion. So essentially, it's giving you a few definitions that the approval if, would require a special permit, that facilities would only be allowed within the general business and regional commercial zones and production facilities and business park zones. The only separation distance that I did include in this draft for discussion is that no dispensary be on a, so this, actually, this, this draft did include the fifteen hundred feet, not from educational or religious institutions, but other dispensary facilities. It talks about signage restrictions, parking requirements, security. And, and that's about it. I just wanted to open it up for discussion and see if you wanted me to continue to finesse regulations, if you'd like me to formalize an application to present to you to vote on. an application to present to you to vote on, um.
Do we have any interest yet in a medical marijuana dispensary at all? Anybody even hint at it?
Yes, I've gotten several inquiries.
Yeah.
Yes.
All, all the last year, I'm sure, right?
Um, all within the last six months.
Six months, huh?
Did you mean medical? You said medical.
Uh, they're for recreational that I've gotten inquiries about.
Yeah, nobody's, nobody's doing medical anymore.
Right.
Should, should we send this back to town council? I mean, to look at, I mean, I thought the town council pooh-poohed the whole thing. They didn't wanna do it at all, uh, uh, you know? Is that, you know, should we be listening to them?
Send it back to the councils, huh?
Well, well, my, didn't, town council didn't wanna do this at all, right?
They throw it at us, yeah. Why would we throw it back at them?
Well, wouldn't the opinion, they didn't wanna go there, right?
Yeah, I mean, we asked them for their input and, I mean, that, my guess is that if we move forward with draft regulations, the same people that had input at the council level will have input for us here. And, you know, I would invite that so that at least, you know, we're hearing the same things and can, can respond to the same things. But I, you know, I, I think that was kind of their initial reaction was no, no retail, but okay to production and, you know. Frankly, I don't think there's any real interest in production around here. And that the real interest is in the, the retail.
Yeah.
I guess my only comment in, you know, for two reasons. One, just kind of not being hypocritical. I wouldn't wanna put a fifteen hundred foot separation distance here when we just decided we didn't wanna have a fifteen hundred foot separation distance five minutes ago.
Right. So I, you know, I started with that because that is what is currently in place with our medical facility. So just, you know, to, for a starting point.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, and, and actually, in the recreational statute, it, it talks about separation distances and it sends you over to the liquor control statutes. But if you look at those, those separation distances are from like veterans hospitals and convalescent homes and monasteries and things like that. It's not separation from another liquor store. So, you know, I, I agree that everybody's doing it, but it's not specifically called for in the statute. So, um, you know, I, I don't honestly think we're gonna have such a level of interest that particularly if we were to narrow it to those two zones and to do it by special permit, that we would be having them within fifteen hundred feet of each other, just because of the nature of the industry.
And based on the discussion we just had from the previous application, I mean, I think that that applies.
The points that Rich was just making, I think, would, now, my, my concern, uh, I guess specifically with regards to, uh, four A, I, I don't see why we can't dovetail with the, you know, the same standards that we use for, uh, you know, for, for controlling the liquor establishments.
Right.
Cause that, you know, those are, you know, those are reasonable standards. Uh, they're standards that this commission is used to working with. And, um, they've worked fairly well, I think, for the community, for the public interest, as well as for the, the administration of, of the regulations by this commission, so.
So I could revise the draft to include the proximity language that's already current in the five point eight alcoholic beverages.
Yeah.
So, Richard.
Yes.
Uh, I guess I'm wondering, shouldn't we be voting if we want this or not as a commission before we decide to do all this work?
I agree with you.
I, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, frankly, I've kind of put that on the table a number of times and we've, haven't, we haven't had enough people here, I think, to be representative. I mean, if, if there were, I think the last time I asked, there were five of us here. Um, you know, tonight, there's six. Um, you know, there, there's supposed to be nine members and three alternates. And I know, you know, I know there are two people who feel strongly against it. There's one person who feels strongly in favor of it, who aren't here tonight. Um, but I mean, if, you know, if there are a number of people here tonight who just think we should, we should stick with the prohibition, then, um, you know, I'm all ears because I, I don't wanna make, you know, work for Denise and for us unnecessarily if, you know, if a majority of the commission or even a majority of whoever happens to be here on any given night votes against it. Because I remember when we were doing the medical marijuana regulations and the special permits, it was like, every time we had a vote on anything, it was five to four, one way or the other, depending on who showed up. And, you know, I don't know whether that's gonna be the same this time around or not, but, um, you.
Sure, we should be doing what the residents want, I think, in this, but I, I don't, I have yet to see anybody come and talk to us about this yet. I mean, nobody seems to care.
Either way.
No, I'm saying, nobody seems to care one way or the other, so.
Well, when they'll be here is the day after we do something.
So, okay, that's, that's, cause we've always changed it, then.
Yeah.
My personal opinion is, I wouldn't even go forward with this thing. And, and again, I'm not, it gets me a lot. I'm more, more power to it, but I'm just saying, why waste our time, put a lot of effort into something that, I, again, I haven't seen anybody so hot on the thing, right?
I, I mean, I, I'll declare, I, I think we should prohibit it in this town. That's my belief.
Yeah, I give it none against, I just don't see to spend a lot of time on it, but.
And, uh, you know, I, I don't know how much benefit we get. People have argued that, well, everybody else is doing it, so why shouldn't we? Okay, that makes some sense. And if the town gets some benefits, some tax benefit, then why not cash in on it? It's kind of the only argument I've heard. Uh, but I haven't seen what that number is, you know? I, I just don't think it's a good idea to have it in this town.
Well, it's three percent of the gross sales.
Yeah, which is one.
And it, and there's like a restriction on what it can be used for.
Yeah, but what kind of gross sales would like one dispensary have? I mean, you got three percent of a hundred thousand a year is nothing, three percent of a couple million a year is, you know, substantial. So I, I mean, I don't know what these things do in turnover.
I think the expectation is that they, they would be more like the couple million than the hundred thousand.
Well, okay.
George, yeah.
I'll only say.
I mean, they're not selling chiplets.
Geez, that much you say? You're kidding. Uh, e- even with what I'm gonna say, that on the, on the line over here, next to the Berlin Turnpike, we have a medical, that we have fully operational stuff, uh, both the regular and the medical and so forth. Uh, practically, you might call it almost Weathersfield. It's, uh, it's right on the line. And I don't know why people think they need something here in this town, or that it's gonna make a difference. And we're not gonna put it down in old Weathersfield, or I don't know who would be interested in the Silvestine, but maybe. Uh, so, you know, already, there's, there's a major dispensary there. So I don't hardly need to consider it.
Where, where is that at, George? Where's that?
It's just north of the animal hospital after Prospect.
It's in that white building that has like three or four fronts. It's maybe an urgent care or something. Tom?
If we're declaring, I, I would tend to be in support of having such regulations and having that as a possibility of existing within the community. Doesn't mean that would necessarily would, would occur. But this whole area of, of, uh, marijuana regulation and so forth has just been so fraught over the history of this country with, uh, issues of, of, of race, class discrimination and, and factors that go way back in, in our history that are, uh, you know, quite negative to, to us as a, as a, as a republic, as a civilized society. Uh, we're, you know, clearly, uh, the powers that be have, have declared themselves over the timeline of our history, being strongly in favor of liquor and, and strongly in disfavor of, of, you know, other, uh, drugs, so. Uh, and marijuana's been caught up in, in that whole historical scenario, all without issues of, of fact or reason. And it's an emotional issue. And I prefer to have things based upon, you know, facts and, you know, demonstration of, of real harm versus, uh, per- perceived harm and, and, uh, I, I would tend to think that it, you know, this commission would be well-placed to make those kinds of decisions based upon, uh, you know, lawful criteria. And the state has already decided as a matter of public policy to permit, uh, you know, this kind of activity, this kind of business activity in the state. And, um, uh, I, I think that public policy debate, you know, should be, you know, definitive and not have Weathersfield or other communities, you know, stand out as being, uh, deniers. When I was growing up, as a child, I, I happened to live in the state of Arkansas. And, uh, the state of Arkansas had prohibition still after nineteen thirty-three. I happened to live in a, in, in Lafayette County, which was a dry county. And, uh, uh, it was a county in which, uh, I had classmates that, that went around making moonshine for farmers in the fall in order to have shoes to go to school on. You know, and yet, you know, there's this perceived morality issue that gets caught up into, uh, you know, thi- this, this kind of, or this issue that I don't think really belongs there. I recognize that there's a great member, great number of the public that have, uh, grave feelings with regards to this issue. Uh, and I respect that, but I also recognize there are many others in our society that would like to have access to, uh, this chemical, or this batch of chemicals as, as a recreational drug, kind of on the same basis that we've allowed alcohol for the last, uh, five or six thousand years to perpetuate itself in society. So, I think it's a, you know, it, it's a regulated industry. It should be a regulated industry, but not, I don't think there should be a prohibited industry.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess personally, I'm, I would be supportive of it, but I'm not like adamant about it.
To me, it's just a question, do you wanna put the effort in, or have the town do it for what it is? Maybe, maybe get one or two more part twos. There's no hair off my back. I, I'll be honest with you, I have my share of marijuana at home, so it doesn't bother me in the least bit. I just go get it. But my point is, is it worth the effort for one or two of those stores, maybe? You know, the way they have it set up is that easy to get, get it, so. Get a store. It's probably end up being a big business of some sort, but that, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just, yeah, like I say, you said you had a couple people come in, were they legitimate or just kinda, I don't know? Like I say, it's gonna be worth the money.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess to, to kind of follow up on, on your comment and to say more, I think we've already done probably seventy-five or eighty percent of the work necessary to put something together.
Copy and paste it, yeah.
And.
Clean it up.
Yeah, I mean, and, and I'll send some comments because I think we need, you know, I know these are the, based on the, the medical regulations and, you know, there are new definitions that need to go in and so forth, so. Um, you know, don't need to reinvent the wheel, but I think just to kind of get us off the dime, particularly since the moratorium doesn't go on forever, i- it would probably be good to have something proposed and have a public hearing on it and, you know, invite anyone and everyone who has an opinion and, um, you know, kind of go from there.
Probably a good idea, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think, you know.
We don't have everything in town. I understand what Tom was saying, but we don't have used car lots, we don't have bars, love food. I mean, other than, I'm just saying, we, we don't have everything and we think we, but again, I'm, I'm with you. We're, it's copy and paste, ninety percent done. I guess it's worth it. Who knows? Maybe someone's gonna come in with a whole big home run. We'll make a lot of money, I don't know.
But I, but I agree with the chairman. We'd like to hear from the general public in a hearing, maybe, whatever it's worth.
Yeah, I mean.
Or, and more commissioners maybe present too, would be, oh.
Yeah, that would, that would be nice. I mean, you know, we have.
I don't know if we can get that.
Brightest minds on the commission here tonight. Get a few others to show up, it would be nice. It's not a public hearing, but I don't know. Does anybody in the audience have any comments?
Are you, are you representing the council or are you a citizen?
Uh, Tom Mazarella, citizen and council member.
Yeah, you do.
I don't know. I'd, I'd like to say that, uh, I think the commissioner should be, uh, a little bit more informed about what can be done with the potential, uh, proceeds, if you will. From what I've read, it's fairly restrictive as to where the money can be spent and how it can be spent. I think the way the state went about it, to me, i- it's bizarre where you're gonna use part of the proceeds of selling the product for, uh, addiction, uh, remediation and, and helping people that become addicted, much the same as th- they've done with gambling. They only have all these programs to, uh, uh, help, uh, resolve gambling addiction when they're legalizing all forms of gambling. It's constantly compared with alcohol. And, um, Commissioner Dean makes some excellent points about how, you know, one is more widely accepted than another. Uh, my personal opinion is that it's readily accessible to residents of Weathersfield. As you said, Berlin, Turnpike, uh, Hartford, South Windsor. It's not like we're, we're imposing a burden on the public where they can't have access to this product if they so choose. I, I am concerned about the volume of people coming into our town to purchase cannabis. It doesn't bring anything to the town to have, um, two million dollars worth of business generated on the Celestine Highway, where I don't think the people are gonna come from out of town, uh, to buy cannabis and then spend, uh, several hours enjoying a restaurant or doing some other activity in town. I, I just don't see where it's a great benefit. Um, I've been trying to get a feel for what was gonna happen here. I do plan on inviting the police chief, the Connecticut, uh, Health District, uh, official, and our Social Services Department to speak against, uh, cannabis sales as they did at the town council. I have yet to read anything that really supports any health benefits other than medical marijuana, uh, of, of cannabis. It's a, it's a recreational activity. So, um, the police chief was, was fairly, um, strongly worded against it. Uh, he sees, he doesn't see any benefit to it. He sees bad things, uh, as far as his officers being able to, uh, enforce traffic, uh, traffic laws and things of that nature. It's not so easy as doing a breathalyzer test like you do with alcohol. He had a number of valid, uh, concerns. Same goes with social services in, in the Health District, so. I think the, they won't hesitate to come in, but to me, it seems like a, a lot of time and energy if the majority of the commission is opposed to it, so. That's, that's where I stand with that, but. And like I said earlier, uh, we brought it up to the council. And like I said earlier, uh, we brought it up to the council, it wasn't a unanimous vote, it was, uh, I'm gonna say it was five to, five to three. So, um, just food for thought and we did, we did opt to throw in the distribution and manufacturer processing, all the other, uh, forms of, uh, cannabis business except for the recreational because it's not that we're adamantly opposed to, to cannabis as a, you know, we just don't wanna have that, uh, occur. But we just didn't see the benefit of having the volume of people and you heard one commissioner at the last meeting say, you know, they're literally lining up to get into these stores and I don't know if that's the case or it was just initially. Uh, a couple of years ago, I, I spent some time at the medical marijuana, uh, facilities just to get an idea of the volume and it was, it was like a revolving door, it was constantly. And, you know, same kind of thing that you were talking about with, uh, um, a liquor, uh, store in a bad location, you know, you're, you're having all this traffic come into one facility. You know, it's not like they spend any time there, they go in, do their business, come out, and if you have, you know, a steady stream of of traffic, I don't see what the, what the real benefits and then coupled with, now you do, say you do get a hundred thousand a year or whatever. You know, that's great, but if it's so restrictive, uh, one of the restrictions had to do like you could improve the area that the facility was in. So, let's say you put it on the corner of, uh, Jordan Lane and Celestine, well, you know, year one and year two, you, you improve the, the area that, that, that store's in, wha- what are you doing year eight and nine and ten? You can't just keep, uh, doing the same thing, so, I just didn't see the benefit, but just wanted to share that with you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Chairman, if we wanna go ahead with anything, we would have to go through some of the process that the council went through, hearing from the various people. Okay, that they did.
Yeah, well, I mean, it would be a public hearing and, you know, we can't subpoena people to come talk to us, but if, yeah.
Not only the public, which I wanted, but
Yeah.
the, the technical people, the chief and, you know, the rest of them.
Chief's opinion would make a lot of difference, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I mean, I, obviously, we'd make sure they were aware of it, but, you know, they can come or they cannot come depending on.
And I, I have had, uh, extensive conversations with the chief and he is not supportive of the regulations.
I'll be honest with you, if he's not supportive, if we ever had a vote right now, I wouldn't support it either, I mean, I'd be on his side. Right, if, if he didn't see any basis for it, I don't know, you know, plenty of places to go.
Denise, does this help you at all or are you, no?
I, I mean, I'm, I'm just at the point where I don't know if you would like me to formally submit for an application for a zoning text amendment that would be reviewed by CROG, come back to you for a public hearing and then a vote, or if you are not interested in me proceeding?
Well, I guess one question I have is when, when is the moratorium?
January first.
All right, so
Be close.
We don't have time to do anything. Um, basically because, you know, come January first, somebody could come in with an application.
Well, our regulations are prohibitive, so if it's not permitted, it's prohibited.
But the statute says that it would be evaluated on the same basis as a similar use.
So, our zoning enforcement officer's opinion is not that there's a, a similar use, I guess, so.
Would be similar medical?
Yeah.
Liquor store, I, I don't know.
Well, tho- those are the two that have been put out there as similar uses, yeah. I mean, I, I, I guess personally, I just kinda wanna put an end to this, one way or the other. And, and probably since we've already done the work on this, you know, I'll get you my comments before the end of the week, we can tune it up and just sort of move ahead with that. And, you know, if it passes, it passes, if it fails, it fails, you know, we'll have a public hearing, probably sometime
Okay, so go.
end of January, beginning of February and then.
So, what you're gonna do is go through the process, which makes sense to me.
Yep.
And then we have an open hearing, we hear from the public.
And then take a vote.
We got it written up in case, yeah, okay. Makes sense to me, too.
Yeah, I mean, because the alternative would be to, you know, draft a, draft a regulation amendment prohibiting it.
Right.
We have a hearing on that.
Same conversation.
Yeah, in the same conversation and if that one fails, then, you know, we're back to nothing, so.
Could we get a, I don't wanna do, make you do a lot of work, could we get a better understanding on the taxes, what we can actually do, what Tom mentioned, just?
Yes.
Yeah, and that, that was
I don't go crazy, but I'd like to see it actually.
That was in the stuff that was sent around a few months ago when we first were talking about it, I mean, there were like, there were like
You don't pay attention to it till you really actually have something looked at, so watch.
It's like a three percent local sales tax that can be used for six different things.
Okay.
You know, including like upgrading the immediate area, like you're saying, you know, um, social counseling, drug abuse counseling. You know, those kinds of things, you can't use it to
No new soccer fields?
No, you can't use it for soccer fields or to buy new trucks and pave roads and
It doesn't go into the general fund.
No.
So, it's basically after two, three years, it's kinda like you said, it's kinda worth it to certify it, other than?
Well, I mean, uh, other than to the extent that that's supplanting other money that would've gone to that, that can be used for whatever you wanna use it for, but
Yes.
you know, fr- frankly, most of those things aren't things that we're already doing with town money, so.
Well, usually, we're not, are we spending a lot of town money in front of his store? It'd be no different, right, and I'm just saying, we're probably not, so if there's this, you know, if you're getting all these taxes that puts money in front of someone's store, I'm not, after a couple of years, like I say, how far could you go?
Well, I mean, it's not like the s- the frontage of the stores.
I understand the corner though, but it's not like, we're a small town, it's supposed to, you know, it's.
So, what's it, what?
Come up, come up and speak a few.
So, I was in Massachusetts this week, well, yeah, yesterday, Monday, looking at a dispensary. And that's why I wanted to like get up and say something here, so, uh, average dispensary in Massachusetts is doing about nine million dollars in sales. And, uh, the traffic is a nightmare because, now, given the fact, once there is recreational marijuana dispensaries here, like, is the, are these people gonna go there to Massachusetts? That's a question to be asked. And are we gonna get the same amount of traffic concentration that Massachusetts is getting because it was one of the first states to do it in, on east coast? So, uh, those are the things, I, I just felt like maybe you could use that information, but as a citizen and as an individual of the community, I would vote to prohibit it. I would, I think we have some years left to see the effects of it in the community of this dispensaries. And, uh, we don't necessarily have to be so open-minded about it where we say, oh yes, the state wants it and let's go for it because it's gonna bring in some more revenue. I, I feel like it'd be better to let other people take the lead, it's okay to be, uh, to wait around for a little bit and see what effects, uh, it brings to the communities, uh, where they put the dispensary. That would help us to make a strong argument of like, oh yes, whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. That's all I wanna say. Well, thank you, thank you for letting me speak.
Sure, and, you know, as, as we were discussing, we will be having a public hearing and you're
Yes.
Love to hear from you then, too.
Awesome, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it, not to belabor this, but I mean, I do get into kind of the quandary based on what, what Tom was saying, that, you know, it's not like, it's not like marijuana doesn't exist in Weathersfield now. Um, you know, so the effects, you know, wh- what is the diff- marginal difference in effects on our community by having a, a regulated place that sells it versus wherever people are getting it now? I have no idea.
Well, you may get a storefront rented that wouldn't have been rented, to me, that's about what you're gonna get. That's probably what you're gonna get.
You get a lot more cars than you have now, I mean, it's another condition, I mean, you gotta consider all these things.
Yeah. All right. We have a, we have a plan. Um, all right, next, minutes of November fifteenth.
Make a motion, Joe, please, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, motion by George, second by Peter. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Okay, staff reports.
Um, the only thing that I have to report is, um, I was contacted this week by, um, the developer for Starbucks and they're looking to secure a foundation permit, um, in the next week or two. Um, and we also received building plans for, uh, Larissa and Tony Linoche at one forty-six Main. Um, they submitted their final plans yesterday, they were reviewed by the engineering department, they are all set. So, they're gonna be preparing the Mylars for signature and then, um, that project will get rolling as well.
Did they get squared away with HDC?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yep.
I don't wanna hear about that again.
There, there are, there, there are a few items that they do need to go back for, but they're aware of that.
To them or to us?
To HDC.
Okay.
Yeah. And if there's any other properties that you have any inquiries about, I can give you information.
Yeah, somebody asked me again, and I think I mentioned it to you months ago, and it's not your jurisdiction. The, the U-Haul trucks at the, the hardware store on the Celestine?
Uh, Charles did issue a cease and desist and the owner did contact me last week about, um, submitting a special permit to, um, go forward with that use.
Okay.
Yep.
Now, that's a separate ownership from the other thing that might be coming into us, on the topic zone.
Yes, yes. Uh, the property that we were just talking about is actually owned by Ocean State.
It's the, the little hardware store, like opposite from Vito's?
And I didn't like what I was seeing there right along either, and, uh, but, but
But you make me the bad guy, why I have to say something?
So, this is
Down at the store itself.
This is, uh, five seventy-four Celestine, um, about a block to the south on the east side, um, they have a current approval for, uh, display of outdoor merchandise. They were cited, um, for merchandise in addition to what is typically, um, approved. So specifically, um, the planning and zoning approval, the condition is that they can only have three items out front. Um, and, you know.
This is the one next to the flower box.
Yeah.
They used to have the paint dripping signs.
Silver stones, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think it would probably be more appropriate to, uh, delineate an area that they can maintain for outdoor display instead of saying a certain number of items because it's just impossible for the enforcement officer to make sure, you know, that that's, um.
Makes sense to me, yeah.
And the other one is the cross automotive?
Yeah, the corner of Wells Road, um, so that is going to design review next Wednesday night. Um, they are looking to remove, um, the lifts in the auto repair, uh, portion of the building on the south side closest to the diner, um, and expand the convenience store into that area. They would still maintain, um, an oil change service on the north end of the building.
Mm-hmm. Even though they don't do oil changes?
Right, and it would be a different, they would have that space for lease.
On the north, is, isn't there a convenience store now on the north side?
Uh, it's in the center.
It's between the oil change and the
Oh, okay, so it's in between.
Yeah, there's like a pass-through on the very north end.
So, they had come to design review, um, they modified their, uh, submission to include a second entrance to the building on the east elevation. Um, so that's what they'll be reviewing, uh, next week.
That's the back?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, any activity on Boondoggle?
Boondoggle, actually, they did submit their Mylars to us about three weeks ago and at our last meeting, um,
I signed them.
The chairman signed them, so they have been filed on the land records. Um, so at this point, he needs to get his building plans together for the building permit.
Something that I think we used to get occasionally was a report from the zoning enforcement officer. I was wondering if you could ask for one, 'cause I don't, I don't think we've seen one in a year or more. And I just don't know what, what is out there, I mean, and, you know, like, like with the U-Hauls, I mean, we probably all either see things or have people ask us about things and it
Yep.
would be helpful to, to see that.
Good, good idea.
I mean, he, he doesn't need to come here and talk to us about it or anything, but at least
I, I did speak with him about it, he did agree to do that, so I will touch base with him again and I'm sure that he could join us at one of the upcoming meetings and give a report.
Charlie, well, this time of the year, he doesn't have grass to go out and tell people.
To measure the lawns and, yeah.
It's got, it got a little easier in the winter.
Yeah, it's just furniture by the side of the road.
All other nonsense and yards.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
All right. Anybody else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Joe, second by George, to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you all very much. Are these two likely to be at the next meeting or are we gonna have a next meeting?
So, the next meeting is the twentieth.
Yeah.
Um, I was planning on having the meeting unless, um, you know, this, the, the first item, five seventy-four, that was the result of a, um, enforcement order, um, I don't think that there's any immediacy to that, um, they, they just reached out to us right when they got that to, to clarify that, so, um, there is a potential that design review might not be ready with that next week.
Okay.
So, if not, I don't know if you, if it's only this item, I don't know if you would prefer to hold it?
You mean, if it's just the shop, shop right one?
No, just the other, the
Aligners? Elmas?
Yeah, why don't we decide when we get closer to the time?
Okay.
You know?
I'll let you know how the designer
I mean, I'd, I'd hate to, I'd hate to push it off to January and then have the meeting be on an off day because of the holiday and then have three people here, so.
Yeah, all this big snow stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll kinda play it by ear.
So, you said the twentieth?
The twentieth.
December, right?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.